Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, November 16th. I'll look for the record that Commissioner Giffens and Commissioner Thomas are present at the Nat U Hill Room. And that we have Commissioner Jones appearing via Zoom. And she will appear on camera for any votes. And we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we have an amendment to our agenda, please.
Yes, I move to add item E to the agenda. This will be contract with Monroe County Public Library on behalf of Community Access Television Services. Fund name, county general, fund number 1,000, in an amount of $300,930.
I will second that. So we have a motion and a second to add item E to our agenda. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the rule?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved at three zero.
Thank you so much. Next, we will move on to department updates. And we have Ms. Kelly joining us from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. COVID-19 cases are still at a low level in the community. BA5 is still the leading variant in the United States. As a reminder, the bivalent boosters are still offering protection. And the Public Health Clinic has vaccines available. You may call 812-353-3219.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens? I keep reading in the newspaper that hospitals are kind of overwhelmed with the RSV, especially for the pediatric cases. Do you know if there's a problem locally at all?
I have not heard of any local issues. I know in Indianapolis, the hospitals there are very overwhelmed, but I do not have any specific data here on Bloomington hospitals.
I hope that no news is good news then.
That would be good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Appreciate you, Ms. Kelly. And next we have Ms. Whitmer here from Parks and Recreation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to tell you the good news that the Cars Farm Greenway is 100% open from Cars Farm Park to Ellisville. There's three trailheads that you can park at, one's at Cars Farm Park, and has a restroom open 12 months out of the year. At Loesch Road Trailhead, and it has a very large ADA accessible porta toilet that is serviced once a week. And the third one is Campbell's Park that mostly doesn't have restroom facilities open most of the time, I think just during baseball season. But you can park at either any of those parks or trailheads and enjoy it. It's absolutely beautiful, the trees. I wanted to thank the commissioners and the council and the Highway Department, Duke Energy Foundation, and of course, the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, which we've got a bulk of our money to fund this. It's 7.27 miles from Cars Farm Park to Ellisville. And at some point, it'll be connected to Will Detmer Park and to the Beeline in the future. It may take a couple of years for that. But we're very excited. Do you have any questions about the trail?
All right. Thank you so much. This is great news and I so grateful to hear this and it's taken a long time, but boy, persistence pays off. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Will we be having a ribbon cutting ceremony?
Yes, there will be a ribbon cutting on Tuesday, December 6th. We're going to start at 11:30 at Cars Farm Park Trailhead. And then we will be able to transport, or you can go in your own car, to the Loesch Road Trailhead at noon. We don't know yet, but the governor might be coming down for the ribbon cutting. It just all depends on his schedule. They've given it to him. There is a good possibility because of many of the ribbon cuttings are in spring. No one's in December. So as long as he's not busy, he might all, you know, come on down to Bloomington. And DNR staff will be there, of course, and Ellisville will be representative. Duke Energy will be there. So we are really excited. And I also do want to give a shout out to the Sheriff's Department. They have been patrolling the Limestone Greenway and the Cars Farm Greenway, and they will also be there with their Polaris at the grand opening. So the Sheriff's Department has been a tremendous asset to that. People visibly visibly see them on their bicycles patrolling, which I think is very important. And just for the public's notice is that you will see signs every quarter mile. It'll say KFG, which stands for Cars Farm Greenway. It has a mile marker and then a thing. So if you if you're calling 911 for whatever reason and you're anywhere near a sign, just read the sign and the dispatch will be able to tell the officers where you're located and which trail you're on. So the Limestone Greenway will be LG particular numbers. So I know it's very confusing for the public of which trail am I on? And that is difficult.
Yeah, excellent. Very, very well organized. Yeah, that's true. We just shout out to our Sheriff's Department for their patrols. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just very excited about this also. And certainly looking forward to the ribbon cutting ceremony. I've already tried out the trail a couple of times. And my dogs were very excited by the cows right by the fence, right by the fence.
Yes, do not touch the livestock. That's a good note for everybody on the trail. Excellent. Thank you so much for bringing the good news and congratulations to you and your staff and the board and everybody who's worked so hard to make this possible. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, it looks like we also have a department update from Ms. Nestor Jellin, Director of Planning. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to give a quick update that we will be having a public engagement meeting on December 13th. That is our regular Plan Commission meeting, and it will start at 5:30 in the Nat U Hill Room. I'm going to share my screen just to show the homepage of our Monroe CDO website. So we do have an update on our Monroe CDO website with all the information. The purpose of the public engagement meeting is to go over the draft zoning map as well as the draft use table. We're going to have that draft available to the public at least five days before this meeting. And we will release that for everyone's review, but we hope that people can join us either virtually or in person to go over what their zoning will be, what their uses might be, and to give us their feedback. So MonroeCDO.com is always a good resource for you to go and check for updates. You can also find under Maps, the draft zoning map is linked right here. And when you link to this, you can get to your address fairly quickly by searching in the top left corner. So people that have questions and maybe they can't make it to our meeting in person, you can always call our office at 812-349-2560. And one of our planners would be happy to help you with your specific property and any questions that you have. So I can take any questions that you have or if you'd like any more information.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Nestor Jellin. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Wow, this is another multi-year project, right?
Definitely. Lots of hard work already has gone into this. Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for having reached out so very diligently to the public during this whole process. So the public has really had a chance to weigh in and will have still more chances. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great point, Commissioner Jones. It's, I remember warmer weather and outdoor meetings and all kinds of efforts to try to reach out to the public even before the zoning map was was written out. So a really good opportunity to learn more for the public. And then, as Commissioner Jones mentioned, there are going to be a number of opportunities for the public to provide comments or feedback on specific aspects of this of this plan. So thank you for bringing this forward. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Right. Great. Any other departments have an update to offer?
I think the Legal Department has a couple of updates. The first update is we did have our bond sale, if you will, for our bond anticipation note. And again, this is the the over $10 million bond anticipation note. The rates were a little higher than we expected. 4.3 million. We are hoping, as we still are getting ready to to do the same process for our general obligation bond, that that is due to a smaller market due to the size of the of the lending. We think that is reasonable. But but it so we and so we went ahead and forwarded the term sheet to the lowest offer. And it has a essentially a buyout date of by January 14th of next year. So that should line up with if we can get through the process to do the jail construction, to be able to wrap that into that secondary bond. So we think that timetable will still fit our intended purposes. The second item we have that I our department is looking at is there's a provisional ballot meeting on Friday. Due to the nature of that this year, we expect there to be a larger crowd and maybe a need for some security services. So with with your guys' permission, I think we're going to reach out to the Sheriff's Department and see if they have anybody available that could help be there to make sure everybody stays calm and civil. If not, we may reach out to the Sheriff's Reserves or the or the courts to see if they have any available bailiffs or anything like that for that use. So just kind of wanted to give you that update, see if you guys are comfortable with us moving in that direction.
Yeah, I am.
I'm definitely, I definitely am.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Right. Thank you for that.
Those are both my updates.
Okay, great. Any other department updates for items not on our agenda? Okay. All right. So with that, we will move on to item four, which is public comment. This is for an opportunity for the public to offer commentary for items not on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Similarly, there is a three-minute time limit on each of our agenda items for public comment. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone and that will identify the fact that you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your final statements. And we'll begin inside the Nat U Hill Room. And if you're on Zoom, raise your hand and we'll come to you next. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Distinguished Staff. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I don't have any formal statements that I put together today, but I just want to make a few few comments here. And it was great to hear the Cars Farm Parks Trail completion and that ribbon cutting coming up. This goes a long way the quality of place improvements that we need to continually invest in this county to both attract and retain people that just want to work, live, and play here. The other thing we thing I talked about last week was our conversation on Community Justice Reform that happened yesterday. And I want to thank Commissioner Jones for participating in that. We had an overwhelmingly great response to that luncheon where we were oversold actually on on our attendees. And it was wonderful to hear kind of an overview and then the public's response to that. This was a big issue that we unwrapped. Margie Rice was nice enough to facilitate that panel discussion. And it sort of brought home some of those issues that I think the public needs to realize that that we do spend $25 million each year to fund the courts. And this is a big process that the Justice Response Committee is going toward. And we just want to thank the work that you are doing on that. And that we want to continue to support that as a business community any way we can. We look forward to seeing IU Center for Collaborative System Change sort of taking over the facilitation of that. I think it's important for accountability purposes to have that sort of entity. And then finally, if I want to bring up just the the Commission Center and the CIB that the Commissioners passed, and we appreciate you sort of moving forward on that process. As you know, we did not have an opinion on the governance of it, but we are really supportive of moving forward on it. I think the the time has come and the exhaustion has set in and we enjoyed seeing the collaborative process between city officials and yourself last Wednesday. And we, if any way we can support that process anyway, the chamber is here to help. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much. Via Zoom, we have two commenters. First, Councilmember Hawk?
Yes, thank you so much for taking my comments this morning. First, I want to say a quick thank you for the beautiful Christmas tree or holiday tree, whatever one might want to call it. And I was very pleased to see that. I wanted to also say thank you to the Parks Department and the wonderful trail that is now open and will be enjoyed by so many, but especially those in my district that I represent on the West Side. What I come today to speak to you about something that's really very troublesome, and that is that the Monroe County jail staff is very short-staffed. They need direct infusion of increase in salary. They have said that it would be lovely to have a bonus, but that's not going to fix our problem because in order to increase the staff there, they've got to offer an entry-level salary to be able to get people to even apply. It is to a dangerous, critical situation now in our jail, and we must address it immediately. The salary can be adjusted for this year, 2022. That can happen right away. And they need to make sure that they are properly staffed and and supported with salary increases for next year. Whatever it takes, we have, that's our obligation, our obligation to take care of that jail. So all of these meetings about what we plan to do in the future does not take care of the present, and we have an obligation to make sure that that place is as safe and for people to work in and to while they're being incarcerated, to be as safe as possible. And that's our job. So I hope that you'll help support that because the community relies on a safe jail.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, we have Maria Douglas. Can you verify your name and let us know if you're a Monroe County resident, please? No, we cannot hear you. Okay. All right. So we're having some audio trouble. Just encourage Maria Douglas to send us an email and and with her comments or concerns. We appreciate that. Seeing no other commenters, we will move on to item five, please.
Move Approval of the Minutes from November 9th, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments at its corrections?
I had one correction and it's already been made.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the rule on Approval of Minutes, November 9th, 2022?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, and I'm sorry, my camera seems to have quit working.
Okay. And just so everybody in the public is aware that if we can, Commissioner Jones is aware, if we can't see you, then then your your vote will not count unless we can see you when you go. So I'm going to say this motion is approved two to zero.
Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
Move Approval of the Claim Stock Accounts Payable, November 16th, 2022, and Payroll for November 18th, 2022.
Second. So we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Letler, please tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Accounts payable for November 16th, 2022 is $3,698,025.11. Payroll for November 18th, 2022 is $1,838,570.68.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Approval of Claims Stocked Accounts Payable, November 16th, 2022, and payroll, November 18th, 2022?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
And did we resolve the issue with Commissioner Jones?
I'm afraid not. I can try again. No. I'm sorry, it's not working.
Well, then the motion passes two to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. We will now move on to new business, please.
Move Approval of the Ratification of the 2022-2023 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, also known as JDEI Grant Amendment. Fund name, JDAI Performance Grant Odd. Fund number 9163 and an amount of $99,695.
I will second that. Good morning, Ms. McAfee. Tell us all about it, please. Oh, you're muted.
Yes, I was. Sorry about that. I've been playing with my video and forgot all about audio. Well, again, hello and thank you for letting me be here with you all this morning. And I'm excited to be here to ask for the ratification of the JDAI Performance Bonus Grant. This award, which is just under $100,000, is in addition to the grant that we received back in July of this year in the amount of $70,000. So with this grant, this current grant, we have been awarded just over $800,000 from the state to move our JDAI efforts forward, which which is a really exciting total. As you can see from the summary of our application, the grant focuses on transforming our local youth youth justice system from one of really being a deficit-based focus with specific interventions, specific strategies to try and fix kids and families to really working toward employing a positive youth justice framework, which really is under the idea that all youth can be successful. And it focuses on supporting protective factors, creating opportunities for success. Additionally, as with all other JDAI opportunities, we've got some money in there for data to ensure that our data quality, data visualization, we can continue to be a leader in the state with those efforts. So while I am happy to answer any specific questions about the proposal, the summary is a really nice snapshot and it's a lot. So I will open it up for any specific questions you might have.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I wanted to hear a little bit more about the program in Lucas County, Ohio, that you're going to go, I guess, review, look at. I'm not sure how to phrase that, but.
So Lucas County, we were able to make a trip up there back in June of this year. And they are a leader in the nation on transforming their youth justice system. They have an entire misdemeanor unit, which they don't pursue formal charges against the majority of young people who commit low-level felony and nonviolent low-level misdemeanors. Instead, they do again that positive youth justice where they incorporate community engagement, mentoring, learning opportunities. They have a whole foundation of it's really about connecting and achieving and learning and doing. And it really resonated with many of the people in our JDAI community about bringing in more community networks to support the work that we're doing. And we want to go back and learn more about how they've been so successful. They have a security detention facility that has over 100 beds. And when we were there in June, their capacity at that time was under 25. So they have been phenomenally successful in not just keeping kids out of the system or getting kids out, but also maintaining community safety, which, as you know, is kind of the two-pronged approach to JDAI.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Yeah, just thank you so much for pursuing this. This is really something that goes hand in hand with the Community Justice Reform Committee. And you're doing wonderful, a wonderful job. And I I think it shows in the grants that you're getting, which are very impressive. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And just just to highlight for the public, some of the many programs includes Girls Inc., truancy reduction. There's substance use education program. There's data compilation and visualization. It's just amazing. The amount, the amount you're able to do with $100,000. So thank you for your hard work and and your staff. Appreciate you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role in the ratification of the 2022-23 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Grant Amendment?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Still no video. Sorry.
Motion is approved two to zero.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Next item, please.
Move Approval of Indiana University Subaward Agreement Grant. Fund name, Arnold Ventures Grant, Fund Number 4936 in an amount of $25,000.
I will second that. And with a motion and a second, Ms. Hamlin, tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. In April of this year, you all signed a sub-recipient commitment form regarding this $25,000 that is coming to us through the Arnold Ventures Grant that was secured by Indiana University for a racial disparity study that we're doing. It's a 36-month data research project. These funds over the 36-month grant period will be used to pay a part-time employee in our office who will assist the IU researchers with maintaining or pulling and maintaining the files that they're going to be reviewing for the data that they're reviewing. And this contract just legally commits the funding that you agreed to receive back in April.
Yeah, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens? No. Commissioner Jones?
Well, this once again really kind of goes hand in hand with the CJRC work. And it's very exciting that that you all are doing this. And and it's also just interesting to see how many grants we're getting in Monroe County to work on this kind of thing.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Indiana University Subaward Agreement Grant?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
A motion is approved two to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move Approval of Capstone Title Closing Cost Agreement. Fund name, county general, fund number 1,000, in an amount of $9,303.70.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell, tell us all about it, please.
And actually, the estimate is $9,403.70. I apologize if my cover sheet was incorrect.
402. I'm going to make a motion to amend the original motion to read the corrected amount of $9,402.70.
Second.
New motion, and we have a second. All those in favor of amending the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 And since Commissioner Jones is unable to vote, that is that is inappropriate in the rule. the roll call, would not have been necessary, so.
Thank you. All right, please continue.
We, as you, as everyone, I think, knows, we are, we are investigating the Fulton Pike site, or Fulton Pike property for a new justice facility. We are pretty far in that process. We've, we're going to the City Plan Commission in December with the hope to close by the end of the year. In order to do that, we need to have the title search and title commitment ready. Of that $9,400, approximately 87 of that, 100 of that is for the actual owner's title insurance, which would only be extended upon closing. So given that that's not a certainty at this point, we do need to have some of that work already started and being executed to do the title search and things. So this is a contract that allows them to do that work, and we would just, if we would pay it all when we close, and if we don't close, we would just pay the, for the amount of work that's been completed.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, I had been in touch with Mr. Cockrell about this earlier, so.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, since the City Plan Commission forwarded our request with a negative recommendation to the City Council, if this particular property doesn't work out in the end, can any of this be rolled over to a new property? A different property?
This could not. This is a title search for a specific piece of property. So they go, what will happen, they'll go look at the deeds for the past numerous years. A lot of it depends on when was the last time it sold and all that. So they'll do a standard title search, and that is for this specific piece of property. The bulk of the expense would be for if, when we purchase it, we would get a insurance policy that says they've done this search and that there are no title problems with that property. We wouldn't purchase that title insurance unless we closed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amended motion for Capstone Title Closing Cost Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2022-45 to amend no parking ordinance 86-11.
I will second that with a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. This one's pretty simple. We had originally passed an ordinance 86-11 to include no parking locations on Production Drive and Commercial Street on one side of the street. However, we're continuing to have parking issues, which is creating a safety issue for the traveling public. So we are going to pass the ordinance to, or we ask that you pass the ordinance for both sides of the street.
Okay. I see. So we're deleting the West Side only of Production Drive and the South Side of Commercial Street, but then just re-add, adding in the whole thing. Okay, got it. Got you. All right, so it's going to take effect on both sides of the street.
Yes.
Got it. It was a little confusing when I read all this, too.
I know, and it's anticipated. It was always coming to be no parking on these streets for a development that's going to be out there, that's going to increase truck traffic in the spring, so.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. Right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2022-45?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Thank you so much. And we have item E, our new item.
Move approval of the agreement with Monroe County Public Library on behalf of Community Access Television Services, or CATS. Fund name, County General. Fund number 1,000 in an amount of $300,930.
I will second that, Ms. Purdy.
Yes, thank you. This is just a continuation of a longstanding agreement that you guys have had with our local public access television. This has already been, the amount has already been approved by the Monroe County Council for our 2023 budget, and this is just the formality of the agreement.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I really appreciate being able to go back and look at some of the archival information that's available in our meetings, and so I actually do use this service.
Yeah. I think a lot of people do, but not everybody talks about it. Oh, but I think they do. I think you're right. Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just want to thank CATS for doing this. It's certainly a worthwhile service for our community.
Yeah, we, I agree. We're, we are focused on transparency in county government, and this is the best way to ensure it because not everybody can attend every meeting, and something may come up and you want to look back at the archive, or if you can't get out of the house because it's snowing, you know, it's, it's wonderful to be able to connect and to see what's going on in your county government, your city government. It's, it's what democracy's supposed to look like. So thanks to everyone at CATS for your continued good service. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill Room. Mr. Shelton?
Good morning, Commissioner Jim Shelton with the Chamber of Commerce. Want to speak in support of this. We use this at the chamber, especially in the advocacy team, all the time, that CATS has got a wonderful option where you can tag a certain time on a meeting, so we can email something and say, hey, advocacy team, take a look at this. Just click on this link and you'll go to the video right at the point that we want to bring attention to. And then a lot of times in this community, we'll have more than one meeting going on at the same time. And so it's just really, really, really important, and I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Thomas, on it's just a key part of transparency. So, and they do a wonderful job. So we're strongly in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. I don't see any other commenters. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Monroe County Public Library on behalf of Community Access Television Services?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Thank you so much. And we have two appointments.
Yes, I moved to appoint Dawn Diorio to the Health Board. This will be positioned for the remainder of a four-year term that will end December 31st, 2023. And then I also moved to appoint Mike Cassidy to the Licensing Board. This, again, will be serving out the remainder of a four-year term, which will end January 1st of 2025.
All right, I will second that. I appreciate everyone's willingness to serve our community. It's awesome. And let's go ahead and have Mr. Cockrell call the roll, please, on the two appointments.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
All right, thank you so much. Just a few announcements. We do not have anything else on our work session agenda, so we will not be having a work session today. I just want to also remind folks that we're not holding a meeting next week, so there will not be a Commissioners' meeting on November 23rd. Our next meeting will be November 30th at our usual time, 10:00 a.m. here at Nat U Hill. And just a reminder to folks, of course, that we will be, county government will be closed on Thursday and Friday next week. I cannot believe it's already Thanksgiving time, but it is. But we do want to invite the community to join us at the lighting of the Courthouse Square, the canopy of lights. That's Friday, November 25th. That's beginning at 6:00 p.m. It's a little bit of a program, but we'll have the courthouse open so folks can come in and see the holiday decorations. And I'll tell you, it was pretty magical just walking through the alley this morning into, into, you know, toward the courthouse and just seeing all the lights. It's really, really beautiful. So thanks to our staff for doing an amazing job, and I know they've had to work hard to get the lights ready as well, so we appreciate that. And just a reminder to, we mentioned this at the, at the beginning of the meeting, but it's just a reminder to any Monroe County resident who cast a provisional ballot at the general election this November, that they should go to Election Central to get that ballot, as they say, cured. So, for example, if you didn't have your ID, bring your ID, whatever you need to cure your ballot, and that's at 401 West 7th Street, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And the deadline for that is noon on Friday, November 18th. There we go. Thank you. And also just a reminder that since we are looking at the end of November already, that if you are interested in serving on a board or commission, we invite you to submit your application at co.monroe.in.us. And we do have as well a number of, in fact, six Commissioner Office Hours available via Zoom for members of our community, six different times a month. You can meet with one of us and just go to co.monroe.in.us, look on the calendar, and join us. Share your ideas and your concerns, meet with us. We're looking forward to talking to you. And we do have two more blood drives coming up, Thursday, December 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00, and Friday, December 16th, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. These are held at IV Tech, and you can make your appointment at rednecross.org. And if you want updates on road conditions, please sign up for our Resident Alert System, again, at that same website, right in the middle of the page is a banner and a megaphone. Sign up to receive texts and/or phone call or email, your choice, alerts on emergencies and weather emergencies, and also anything having to do with our roads and road closures if it comes to that. And so, let's see. What else?
Well, I want to congratulate Hoosier Hills Food Bank for 40 years
I forgot something.
of serving our community. And especially the way they pivoted during COVID to make sure that people were fed. And, and I really appreciate the fact that, that they're also shifting from just a calories model to nourishment, and that's been very, very evident as we've been out there helping to distribute the food. So I just, congratulations.
Yeah, they've, they've been a huge part of our community for 40 years. It's sad that we still need them, but I'm so glad they're there. And they've had another record month this year in distribution, so the need is not diminishing. But, but you're absolutely right. They were, you know, their resiliency during COVID helped our community be resilient, and that's a really important message. So yes, kudos to Hoosier Hills Food Bank. Thank you to the staff on the board and all the volunteers and everybody who donates. Thank you, thank you. It's, it's 40 years is a big deal.
It's amazing. And that the fact that their staff just is there day after day after day, taking care of people. And then the book, the book drive that they have also to help support their efforts, the community soup bowl each year, just all well done.
All very important work. Great. Thank you for that reminder. And it looks like Commissioner Jones is no longer at our meeting. So, so with that, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Be safe out there, and our meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.